Thank you, Mr. Page. I've got to admit, I didn't think this would happen.[4.83][4.83](laughter) You're exposing yourself to a hell of a night.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the council and I appreciate the invitation. And the one thing I'll say about answering questions is that state law requires that any voter who has a question about process, that I'm required to answer it. So I will continue to do that during my tenure.
Hopefully, you'll answer some tonight.
Yeah, I figured you guys will have some questions. I will provide an overview on some of the measures that we put into place to secure the election and the equipment and the vote. First of all, I just wanted to share our mission statement at the Register of Voters, which is to provide election services for the citizens of Orange County to ensure equal access to the election process, protect the integrity of votes, and maintain a transparent, accurate, and fair process. And then our vision statement is to ensure excellence in the administration of elections, to inspire confidence and trust in the democratic process. So, you know, those sound nice, right? But how do we do it? So, this is a list of the different things that we do to try to accomplish that. I know tonight I'm going to be focusing just on the security measure bullet here, but if you have other questions in the future, I'm happy to answer those. So as some people have mentioned, we strive for having every election be accessible, fair, accurate, secure, and transparent. Now, there are a number of different things that we do. I'm going to highlight some here. There's more on the slides than what I will actually talk to, given the time limit that I have, but-
We got, sir, take your time.
Well, yeah, I want to make sure I have enough time for your questions.
Yeah, all right.
So, the, there are physical measures that we put into place. And, and one of those is that when we, before an election, we test all the equipment we're going to use, and then once it's passed the test, we put numbered security seals on all the equipment before they're delivered to the vote centers. And then when they get to the vote centers, those numbers are checked to make sure that the seals aren't broken and haven't been changed. The other thing about our drop boxes, which have been talked about tonight, they are very sturdy, made of thick, secure metal, they're bolted to the concrete, and each one is individually keyed. There's no master key that would allow somebody to go to every single one of our boxes and open them. Technical measures, one of the things that we protect against double voting is we use an electronic voter roster with poll books, which share encrypted information about voter participation. Very limited information about the voter, just that they cast a ballot or they sign the roster, is shared in near real time between each vote center and with our office. In case we get a vote-by-mail ballot that we start processing in our office, and then a voter shows up at a vote center an hour later, the roster's going to show that we already received a ballot from them and started processing it. I know I do hear from time to time that people want us to make sure that all ballots are cast on paper. That's already the law in California. Every single ballot that a voter casts is on paper. They may use a piece of equipment to mark it if they need assistance marking the ballot, but that accessible ballot marking device that we're required to have in all vote centers actually prints an actual ballot, and that printed ballot is what gets scanned. There's no vote tabulated in that piece of equipment that, that marks the ballot for the voter. The other thing that we do is we, as I mentioned, we test the equipment. So before an election and after the election, we create test ballots, and then every single scanner that we're going to use in the election, we run them, those test ballots through each scanner before the election to make sure that they accurately count the, the votes that we pre-marked on those test ballots. And then after the election, we just did that at the beginning of this week, finished our post-election logic and accuracy test to ensure that the, all the scanners that we used in the election are still accurately counting the votes on those test ballots. The other thing is that we make sure that our voting system is not connected to the internet. Now, there has been confusion before about the voting system before the electronic voting roster. Those two things cannot talk to each other. So we do have an electronic roster that I shared shares time in near real, information in near real time, but that is not, that's just saying that the voter actually cast a ballot or signed the roster. It's not, has nothing about how they voted. That's actually in the voting system on the ballots that are scanned, and those two systems do not talk. Every piece of voting equipment that we use in the vote centers, the printers to print ballots, the ballot marking devices, the scanners, none of those are connected to the internet and do not even have a hardware installed in them to be able to connect to the internet. In terms of process, so voter file maintenance, I know that's something that has been talked about tonight. That is something we do on a daily basis, that within five business days of receiving information either directly from the voter or from an official government source, which includes the United States Postal Services Change of Address Database, we are required to update that voter's record. And we're doing that on a daily basis. And then, we go above and beyond that, and actually, before statewide elections, we will compare our voter registration database to a third-party credit bureau to see if they've got a different address for any of our voters. And then if, if there is any kind of difference in addresses, we will send a notice to that voter saying, hey, we've got information that you're at this other address rather than the one we have on file. Please respond to us to let us know where you are. We can't actually change somebody's registration based on third-party information, but it does give us a clue as to where we may need to look, how we have to reach out to the voter, or to look at other governmental sources to see if we can confirm the third-party information that we have received. As was mentioned, every single vote-by-mail ballot that comes in, we are required to verify the signature on those envelopes. The signature on the envelopes is compared to every signature we may have on file for that voter, and we're looking for similar characteristics. It takes three members of my team to be in agreement that there are significant differences and characteristics between the signature on the envelope and what we have on file to be able to challenge that ballot. If we do challenge, if there are three members of my team that believe that the, the signatures do not compare, we're required then to send that voter by first-class mail a notice that their ballot has been challenged and give them an opportunity to cure that, that signature challenge, whether they forgot to sign it, or whether we found that the signature didn't compare. That's the process right now. There was a mention that we're not done processing ballots. All we're doing today is waiting for cure statements to come back. We have, we have processed all the vote-by-mail ballots we received and either accepted them or challenged them. We've processed all of the provisional ballots that we received in the special election, and they've either been accepted for counting and added to the, to the results, or they've been challenged. And we've duplicated every single ballot we needed to duplicate because of an error by the voter or damage to the, the ballot. All that work's been done. We completed our, our 1% manual tally audit, where we hand-count every single ballot in 1% of the precincts that are randomly selected for the audit. All that work's been done this, by this week, by yesterday. We, this morning, we finished the 1% manual tally. We finished processing the last of the provisional ballots yesterday. And so right now, when, when Sacramento called this election, they required us to give voters until 5:00 PM on Sunday, November 30th, to cure a signature challenge to the ballot. So I am prohibited by state law from certifying this election until Tuesday, December 2nd. But really, all we're doing right now is just waiting for voters to potentially cure. And because the media called the results of this election at 8:00 PM when polls closed on election night, none of the political parties have requested lists of challenged voters from us to go out and knock on doors. So I'm not expecting a huge amount of response from voters to cure their challenges. We've received about 28% of the voters that their ballots are challenged has sent back cure statements that we've reviewed, but I'm not expecting to get a ton more because there's no political parties knocking on doors this election. Now, in terms of the people that, for every election, we have about 70 full-time employees in our office and in our printing shop. We hire for a statewide election like the general one in November '24, we hired another 2,000 temporary employees to help us with that election. Most of those people work in the vote centers themselves. We make sure all of them go through criminal background checks. We train them. The people in the vote centers are trained for at least two full days with hands-on training. We put experienced people from prior elections, either as a lead in each vote center or supervising four or five vote centers to help support them. So we go through a lot of that, that information to make sure that they are prepared to serve the voter and provide them, their ability to access voting and to, to cast a ballot. We also, whenever we are collecting ballots, or even in our office moving them between one point and another, there are always two-person teams that are doing that. So our ballot collection teams that go out to all the drop boxes, they do it in two-person teams. We're monitoring where they are through GPS on their cell phones. We're in radio, 800 megahertz radio contact with them at all times. They're required to take several photos before they're allowed to leave the box to go to the next one on their route. And that includes showing that they removed the ballots from the box, that the fire suppression device that's inside the box is still intact, that they have locked and closed the door and put a sticker seal across the gap between the door and the box. And then when they get back to their vehicle, they have to show that they have the key. And so all that stuff gets sent up through an app on their phone. We've got a three-person team that's monitoring where they are at all times, that are looking at those photos, and then radioing them saying, you are cleared to go to the next drop box. So those are some of the things that we do. We also have a command center whenever, the 11 days of in-person voting that we have at vote centers, we have a team dedicated to answering any calls from the, the people working at the vote centers, who every, every vote center has a cell phone to call in if they've got issues, if there's a disruption, or if they have questions. So there is a team dedicated to answering their, their calls and their questions at all times. We also have a sheriff's deputy or sheriff sergeant that's stationed in that command center so that there, if there is a disruption at a vote center, that they're there to help us triage it and then communicate to the local police department to explain to them that yes, electioneering really is a crime. We do need you to go out there because this person's not heeding the instructions from the registrar voter staff. So that's part of the, the stuff that we do. We also have rapid deployment teams, 10 teams that are stationed throughout the county to be able to fix any technical issues that get called in, replace equipment, replace batteries, provide extra ballot paper if it's needed. They're out there and, and ready to help whenever it's needed. The last thing I'll just, I'll just mention is that we have a culture in our office where we are constantly looking to improve how we do things and identifying areas where we can improve. If there is an oversight or an error made, we are trying to get to the root cause of why that happens, so it doesn't happen again. That commitment to our quality management system resulted in early 2022, the registrar voters received international certification under the ISO program for its quality management system, and we get audited every year. They review, you know, how we're, we're continuing to manage the quality management system. So that's kind of the overview. I figure each of you may have some different questions that I, I will attempt to answer.
What percentage, I'll start, what percentage of votes do you think possibly are inappropriate, illegal, or that shouldn't be counted, that do get through?
I, I'm assuming that that's zero. I know there's a possibility, but I don't, I don't make a determination, I don't make a determination about whether-
I'm giving you, from your expertise, what would your estimate be? That's, that's all. What would your estimate be?
But if I, if we suspect somebody, like, in, in November, okay, so I won't say zero, because in, we do have every election, we have people who attempt to vote two ballots. Doesn't mean that they successfully have those counted, but they try to. And we will refer those to district attorney for investigation. So that, the number of those each election could range from 200 to 400 voters. So we, when we suspect something, we're immediately going to give it to the district attorney's office to actually investigate. I don't have any authority to regulate, prosecute, or do those kind of things, so I have to work with the district attorney to do those things.
Well, the Board of Supervisors, Orange County Board of Supervisors-
Yeah.
Passed an ordinance that no animals are allowed to vote. And that's a big story. The dog voted, but how many others that weren't flagged at, from a federal election, just strictly from a state election viewpoint? Because as I understand it, it was caught because of federal election flags, but we don't have those in the state elections? Is that correct?
Yeah, so I will say what I can, because that is still-
Yeah, pending.
That's still being prosecuted. But the, the reason that we became aware of the Costa Mesa voter was because she had contacted your former city attorney, Michael Gates, and told him that her dog had received a ballot. He contacted me, asked me about it. I immediately then referred it to the district attorney for investigation in October of '24, and then earlier this fall, they actually filed charges against her. In their press release about the charges they filed, they, as you partly pointed out, is that she attempted to vote two ballots in two different elections. So I know people say a dog voted, but this is a person who created a fictitious voter registration using the name of their dog so that that person could attempt to vote twice. In the, the press release says that in the '21 recall election, which was a state election, and therefore, under state law, all that is required is that you attest under penalty of perjury on the registration affidavit, that you, all the information on the affidavit is correct, you are that person. That ballot, according to the district attorney, as they reported, was actually accepted and counted, that second ballot that the, the woman cast. The other thing that's in that press release is the second ballot that she cast in the '22 primary election, which is a federal election, and then falls under the Help America Vote Act, which requires that the voter at the time of registration provide proof of identity. And if they don't at the time of, of registration, before they can actually have a ballot counted, they have to provide that proof of identity. So in that press release, it says that the ballot, the second ballot that the woman from Costa Mesa cast in that '22 primary was rejected because that proof of identity was never provided for that fictitious registration.
And that was a federal election?
Correct.
That involved a federal election?
Yes.
Okay. We know the dog got a few votes, but do you have any estimate how many dogs are registered now?[937.25][937.25](laughter)
The Board of Supervisors, you mentioned ordinance, it wasn't ordinance. They asked me to gather animal license information from all the cities to compare the animal license information with my voter registration roll. We've had 23 cities who have provided their animal license information that we've compared against our voter registration record. And there was only one registrant who we suspect might not be a person, and we, and we referred that to the district attorney's office for investigation. But that, that registrant we suspect of not being a person has never voted.
All right, yeah, because I know last year, when these guys were running, somebody showed us a ballot that was in their dog's name. They, they didn't have, they claimed that they didn't have any ID, idea how the dog got registered to vote. But at that same time, a man who was, applied for his citizenship, he was very scared because he got a ballot. And he was very scared because he thought he was being tested. And he said, God, if I vote, I'm not going to be able to come, become a citizen. But, the whole thing is, he wasn't a citizen, he got a ballot. And there, and along with that kind of person getting a ballot, I get contacted too often, that their son or daughter, people have moved away eight years ago to another state, they haven't been around, and they get several ballots to their house in different names. If they've lived, you know, moved into a place and there were several residences, like an apartment, but they say, yeah, we get like six different names to our house still. That has got to, and you don't know the number of those kind of ballots, is that correct, that are out there?
Well, what I, what I will tell you as part of our process before we mail ballots is every one of the envelopes that contains the ballots before we mail them, that has a barcode that's associated with a voter, those barcodes are scanned on every single ballot to ensure that if, we know whether another ballot has already been inserted and ready for mailing out. So if there, if a second one somehow got through the process, we're catching that before it gets mailed.
But if they're in different names?
If they're different names, the other thing we do before major elections is that we review every address that has 10 or more voters at it, and to try to determine whether or not that address could actually have 10 or more voters at it. You know, is it a group home? Is it a retirement home? Is it an apartment complex that has the same street address but potentially different unit numbers that may not have been added to the registration? So we're looking at those every election. And then ultimately, you know, if, if you get somebody who says that their child who moved away six years ago is still getting a ballot, then what I would ask that parent to do is to write "not at this address" on the envelope and give it back to the postal carrier so that it comes back to me, and then I can inactivate that voter so that no mail goes to that person ever again. If the parent just holds on to it and doesn't tell me about it, I can't do anything about it. So, you know, unless there was something where the, the child did a change of address, so they showed up on the National Change of Address Database that the postal service has, I could find it that way. But if they didn't do that, and the, and the person at the address is not sending it back as being not at that address, so that it comes back to me undeliverable, and I can inactivate the voter, and then after two November even-numbered-year elections, if the person has not responded to a notice I send them that's fordable to update the registration, at that point, I can cancel them. So everybody, every voter that was inactivated before the '22 general election that we sent notices to, earlier this year, we canceled more than 176,000 inactive voters. So there's a, there's a process. There's nothing in federal law or state law that says if you don't vote, you can be canceled.
176,000?
Inactive voters. But they, see, they were inactive since before '22, so they have not received any mail. But they were, we got something-
That was Orange County?
Yeah, that was Orange County.
Okay. Well, not to cut you off, but the, so you don't have, yeah, with that kind of numbers, my, now, how many, you still don't have an estimate on how many are possibly illegal voters out there? Ballots, state ballots that are getting through the system and counting?
No, all I can give you is what, when we find something, we suspect of somebody trying to vote twice, or if we get something referred to us that somebody says, I know this person's not eligible, I know how many things we, we refer to the district attorney for investigation.
Well, how many ballots get returned under those circumstances? Like, somebody says, hey, my son don't, doesn't live here anymore, or, hey, these people, these six people don't live in this apartment anymore, and, but we've received ballots. So-
Yeah, so-
Approximately, just guesswork.
What, yeah, I don't, I actually have that number. I don't need to-
Oh, nice.
So, in 2024, in the, in the primary election '24, 1.6% of the ballots we sent out came back as undeliverable, which was about half of a percent less than the statewide average, as well as significantly less than the United States first-class mail undeliverable stat of 4.3% last year. And in the general election, 1.7% of the ballots we mailed back, we mailed out, came back undeliverable. So we feel that because we beat the state average, and because we are more than half of what the national average is for first-class mail, we believe that's evidence that we are doing a good job of maintaining our voter file.
United for Freedom comes out with a thing, a number stat that says, I believe, 19.7% of the California, I believe it's California, is inaccurate. They're basically illegal animals, just shouldn't count. Let's just sum it up. They shouldn't count.
They have similar data that they have alleged regarding Orange County as well. But the problem is, they, I've asked them, show me your data so I can look at it and figure out how you came to this conclusion, because, but they won't give it to me. And, and my, my data doesn't indicate that that is a correct assessment, because of my 1.9 million voters, only 1/10 of 1% of those 1.9 have not provided proof of identity that have been flagged for, under HAVA, to provide ID before they can vote. So, a 10th of 1% versus 20%, there's, there's something that I would need to, I would need to look at their analysis to kind of understand how they came to that conclusion.
Well, it's pretty scary if they're accurate at all, but do you, two, I have two, I'll do two more questions before I pass it on.
Mm-hmm.
Can you briefly explain the Voter Rights Act and how it costs us, what it costs?
You know about the Voters' Choice Act?
Voter Choice, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
Yeah. So, yeah, elections have gotten more expensive. Part of that is because in 2019, the Board of Supervisors decided that we would conduct all future elections, elections under the Voters' Choice Act. And so, at the time they made that decision, about 75% of all Orange County voters had, were permanent vote-by-mail voters. So it was an increase of about 20, 25% of our voters that we then started voting, mailing ballots to. But, the cost increase is not just because of the Voters' Choice Act. There have been a number of changes in state statute that apply to all counties, regardless whether they're doing Voters' Choice Act, or they're doing polling places. Like, polling place counties are required to have ballot drop boxes, just like Voters' Choice Act counties are. And they, polling place counties are required to mail a ballot, in California law, to all of their active registered voters, just like a Voters' Choice Act county. That wasn't true in 2019, when the Board of Supervisors made the policy decision to conduct elections under the Voters' Choice Act, but that has been true since the November 2020 election. Every election since then, every county, California county has been required to mail a ballot to all of their active registered voters.
But not everybody participates, right?
Correct, yeah. I mean, yeah. I mean, we, it depends on the election. A presidential general election, you may have about 70% or more participation. In a primary, it may be in the 50%. In a election like the special election we conducted for Huntington Beach in June, it could be closer to 30%. It depends on the election, it depends on what's on the ballot, and who is financing any kind of campaign to get the vote out. Our office has the charge of educating voters about how to vote, their options for voting, that there is an election coming up, answering any question they have. But my office is not a get-out-the-vote entity. That is handled by candidates and, and political parties and campaigns.
Okay, last, my last question. I personally, professionally, or whatever, would love to see the voter rolls completely cleaned up. I would love to, well, I think there's a great integrity question, you know, being called with our elections and the validity of, with like a dog voting, no flags in California elections, but in federal elections. How do you, what do you, do you think that voter ID would help the integrity of the, and cleaning up these rolls, where maybe we scrap them and start from scratch and have people come register again with a complete, with an ID? I'm just asking you, sir. I'm at, don't, do you think that would help?
I'm an election administrator, so I do not have a public opinion about whether voter ID should be implemented.
What's your personal opinion?
If that became, if that became state law, then I would implement it.
You would, but professionally, do you think it would make your job easier?
My responsibility to be a nonpartisan, impartial elections official and administrator, it's not my job to take policy positions. Policy positions are taken by city councils such as yourself or the Board of Supervisors, not by a county elections official.
All right. Oh, good, here you go, Butch.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You probably don't remember. I met you when our city clerk, Lisa Lane, and I came down there, and you were kind enough to come over and talk to us, and I appreciate that. And I like to think that my personal invitation to you a couple of weeks ago is while you're here, but maybe somebody else invited you. I don't know. Anyway, well, thank you for coming. I don't have as many questions as our mayor did. Did you say that each, I know that the, the envelopes that are mailed to us have an identifier, you know, like a barcode on the outside. Does each ballot have an identifier on it, too? It could be scanned, and it could say Butch Twining is voting for?
No. There's nothing on the ballots that identify it came from a specific voter. There are barcodes on the ballot that identify what precincts it's from, so that the voting system can accurately, you know, in elections, obviously, this election, there was one question on the ballot for every single precinct.
Right, right.
But in a normal election in November even-numbered year, there's going to be-
Lots of-
Lots of contests. And so the voting system needs to know, this is from this precinct, these are the contests that should be on this ballot from this precinct. So a, a target filled in at this place on the ballot means this vote for this candidate, or this yes or no. So there's nothing on the ballot itself that identifies the voter. At the, once for, for vote, so if somebody shows up at a, at a vote center, state law requires them to verbally say their name and their address, they're looked up on the roster, then, my staff member will then flip around the roster, show the person, say, is this you? The person signs under penalty of perjury on the roster, that they are that voter, and that they understand the penalties of impersonating another voter. They're given a, a ballot to, to mark. There's nothing on that ballot they marked that has their, that voter's information on. All we know is that that voter showed up at the, the vote center to vote and was given a ballot. And then, we compare the number of check-ins to the number of ballot sheets that were scanned to make sure that those balance.
Okay. One of the, one of the areas, when I was, when I was down at the ROV, that very much interested me was the, the signature verification. And I thought that was really cool. And I saw the difference between signature comparisons from previous elections, and then I saw some that it was the, there was no signature verification from previous elections. And I remember asking you, I go, well, what's that signature up? And I was looking at, I think it was the right upper corner of the, of the computer screen, and there was, there was a signature. And I said, where did that signature come from? And I believe you told me the DMV. Is that correct?
Yeah, so for, for people who register online, or at the DMV, if they register to vote, and they provide a driver's license number, the last four of their social, and then VOTCal, the statewide voting registration system, compares that information they provided to make sure that it matches everything else that was filled out, it then pulls the electronic signature from the DMV record into the voter registration record. One of our processes, if that, you know, because obviously, it was mentioned here today, how somebody may finger sign on a touchpad looks nothing like how they may sign it with a pen. And so, when we, either ballots that are challenged because there's significant differences between the signature on the envelope and the signatures we have on file, or if we just notice some differences, even if we see enough similarities, we can accept it, but we, we're starting, we see enough differences to concern us, we forward, we mail out an af, a paper affidavit to all those voters a few months after election. to all those voters a few months after election, to encourage them to fill out a new paper registration affidavit, to give us their signature handwritten on that affidavit, so that we have a new signature. But we're also required under law, every time we accept a signature, either on the ballot envelope, or if it's, their signature's initially challenged, and they send in a cure statement to us, and we accept the signature on the cure statement, we're required to take those signatures and add them to the voter's registration record for future elections to compare against.
Great. I'm gonna do that. That's my next question. So, yeah, so, yeah, it's right here, number three. I just pulled up the form, it's on my, on my computer right here, of a guy applying for a driver's license.
Okay.
So, new guy, new person, goes in, applies for his driver's license, and item number six on the California DMV driver's license application says, do you wish to register to vote? Yes or no? All you have to do is check yes.
Right.
See, now, this is another question I asked you, you may remember, I know you see a lot of people, I go, how do you know that guy's a citizen? You don't. You don't know, because, well, go ahead, you know, I'm gonna, I know that, go ahead and explain what happens after that. So, he checks yes, how do you know he's a citizen?
Yeah, so, under both federal law, as well as state law, a voter is only required on the form to attest under penalty of perjury that they are a citizen. There is no requirement in federal.
They're already a criminal, because they're here.
Yeah, there's.
So, what do they care?
And then, state law goes a step further and says, I am to accept that statement under penalty of perjury that they're, they are a citizen, as evidence that they're a citizen. So, I have no authority to separately try to verify that in any way. So, to go into the question about our voter registration rules, as long as somebody checks that box, they're gonna get registered. So, the information that I gave to DOJ in the summer about voters who had canceled because they were not citizens, they all had said they were citizens when they registered. That's how they got registered in the first place. Then they realized they shouldn't be registered, and they asked to be canceled. So, that information was all provided to the DOJ. What I didn't provide to the DOJ was the driver's license numbers, the social security numbers, the signature images themselves, which, under state law, I'm required to keep confidential to, for anybody.
Was this, I mean, that was not gonna be one of my questions, I think somebody else is gonna, was that in response to the subpoena or the lawsuit from the DOJ that you provided that information? Because I heard that the Board of Supervisors voted three to two to not allow you to do that. Is that, is that something totally different?
Yeah, let me clarify what the chain events. The, the voting section of the DOJ, of the Civil Rights Division, sent me a letter, Maureen Riordan, asking for documentation. There was never, there's never been a subpoena, there still has not been a subpoena. As part of our response to her was, if you get a court order, a protective order, or if you're willing to enter into a confidentiality agreement, like I have with this district attorney's office, I will provide you that, that sensitive personal information. That offer has gone unheated at this point. Instead, they filed a lawsuit against us. With the Board of Supervisors, two members of Board of Supervisors voted to direct me to provide that sensitive personal information to the DOJ, and three said no to that request.
Let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
This is kind of, this is kind of one of my last ones here, but I added a couple in there. Do you personally feel that clean voter rolls are crucial to a fair election?
Yeah, we, that's what we strive for every day when we're updating registration records.
Love to hear that. Let's see, my last one, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, this is gonna be my last one, and I'm gonna leave the other 20 on here off. Military ballots, I was in the military. Councilman Williams was in the military. He, he had a, he had a much more decorated career than I did. I was in Biloxi, Mississippi, and he was over fighting the war in Afghanistan and Iraq. I played golf, he shot guns. Anyway.
Just Iraq, just for the record, not Afghanistan.
Oh, just Iraq. Not that old. I don't remember, I know I registered, I went into the military when I was 17 years old, so I wasn't old enough to, to vote yet, but I know I registered. I never applied for, and I don't even remember what happened back in the 70s, I can hardly remember what I did yesterday. But, I don't remember how I voted, I don't remember if I filed for an absentee ballot, if they even did it back then, or I just didn't vote at all. But I do know that today, that you make, you know, all efforts to get military people their ballots.
Correct.
Do you mail it to their home address here in Orange County? Or, do you wait to get an absentee application and send it to, you know, Germany, or Portugal, or something like that?
Yeah, so, military and overseas voters fill out an application through the federal government to be on the list to receive ballots. And they can choose either to have an email, a link emailed to them, for them to access a ballot, market, print it, market, and then either mail it or fax it back to me, or we mail it to them. Under, under federal law, anywhere between 60 days before Election Day and 45 days, we have to issue those ballots to military and overseas voters. And if we were to miss that 45-day deadline, we'd most likely be under some sort of consent decree with the, with the federal government for missing that deadline. So, we do not miss that deadline.
Okay, just a follow-up to that one. If, if they, if the soldier doesn't provide an application, or an absentee ballot, application, but he is registered, and he lives right here on Main, you know, 2000 Main Street in Huntington Beach, does he get a ballot at 2000 Main Street?
Yeah, if we don't, if we don't know that he's overseas and not at that address.
And could anybody, his mom, or dad, or his brother, or sister, open that ballot, and fill it out for him, and put it in the envelope, and forge his name?
They could break the law, yeah.
Okay.
That would be illegal.
Okay. I want to thank you again for coming, I appreciate it, it's good seeing you again, and again, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Don?
Thank you for coming, sir. A few questions here, and we'll probably bounce around. Can you re-explain the duplicate ballot protection? I mean, there's a record here of a duplicate ballot with the identical name, address, everything. There's nothing different, other than the barcode on the envelope, so that's, this is a one-time example. But can you explain to us how you avoid that, and how, if you have a process in place, how this happens?
Yeah, I'd have to look at each individual instance to kind of try to figure out how that instance happened. But, the general process, as I, as I laid out, is that Orange County is the only county in the state that is actually a certified ballot printer to mail out our own vote-by-mail ballots. So, our print shop actually prints all the ballots. We have two mail-inserting machines that insert all the materials into envelopes. Every hundredth ballot is quality-checked to make sure that the right precinct ballot is in that envelope, that there's no printing errors or issues with the ballot, and then it's sealed up. And then, before they're actually then trade to give to the postal service for mailing, each one of those inserted ballots, the outgoing envelope, are run through our, one of our four mail-sorders, to identify that that voter who's gonna be receiving that ballot has been, is gonna be mailed a ballot. If, for some reason, there was some error, and a batch of ballots was printed a second time and inserted a second time, at the, at the moment we then tried to sort those ballots a second time, the system would indicate, this voter has already received a ballot, that ballot will be outsourced and not mailed. There are possibilities, as I said, if we get information, for maintaining the voter roll, if we get information from the voter or an official government source, we have five business days to make that update. So, at any given point in time, there may be a voter that has two records, because they updated something, and it hasn't been merged at that point. There, there wasn't enough similarity between the two documents, where the state didn't automatically merge them, and it was sent down to us to evaluate, to see whether they could be merged. So, that's a process that we're doing every day, but it is possible to run a voter file, where there are still some records that haven't been updated by that, that fifth business day yet. So, you will periodically get a situation where somebody may get two ballots, because they had two registration records at the time we ran that, that registration file. But, if they tried to send both of those back, by the time we mail them, we've now merged those records, we know that they're for one voter. If they tried to cast both those ballots, we would only accept the first one, and then if there was a second one that came in, we'd refer that voter to the district attorney for investigation of trying to vote twice.
So, on that note, I guess you, you're able to say adamantly that there's never been one person that's voted more than once, that hasn't been caught?
I, I'm, I'm saying that when.
Well, let me, let me rephrase it. So, with that process in place, in the.
Obviously, the district attorney has charged a woman in Costa Mesa.
Right, no, I, no, I'm not talking about that, but every person who's, with that system in place, anybody who's ever voted twice would be caught, 100%.
They should be.
And you can stand behind that?
Yeah.
Okay, pretty strong statement. Can you explain the, one more time, maybe you kind of touched on it with, with Councilman Twining, the online voter registration? Forget about, is there other ways to do it, other, tell me about the online voter registration, let me just ask that.
Yeah, so, the Secretary of State has an online registration portal, and as I mentioned, you can, if you're at the DMV, or doing something online with the DMV, under the, the federal motor voter law, the way that California's implemented that, is that a voter doing, any voter doing something at the DMV has to proactively say, no, I don't want to register or update my registration. If they don't check the no box, the DMV is going to provide their new information to the Secretary of State to update their registration. If they've made no changes, then, then it should, everything should, you know, be combined, it shouldn't create any issues. Where, one of the things I can share is the one election where things happen in the DMV without people paying attention, that does create an issue, is in the presidential primary election. That is the only election where there are actually party ballots, to vote for each party's nominees for president, that are gonna be selected by those parties, for them to be on the ballot in, in November. And, there are, traditionally, there have been three parties that have chosen to allow no-party preference voters to vote in their primary, and three that have required no-party preference voters to change their registration to that party, to be able to get their ballot. And so, typically, what, every time we have that election, we have a certain number of people, and we're required to do a lot of outreach to non-party, no-party preference voters, a number of different ways, mail, online, email, any way we can get ahold of them, we're supposed to reach out to them, to let them know about this choice they have. And we will have voters that will come in and say, I've always voted with this party, how come I'm getting an MPP ballot? And, I will tell you, almost every time we look at their record, it's because they did something in the last few months at the DMV, and didn't realize that they didn't check no, they didn't want to update the registration, and then when they didn't pick a party preference as part of those screens, it automatically then made them a no-party preference voter, because they didn't select a party at that step.
Okay, fair enough. Am I able to sit at home, and, I've been registered forever, so I've never had to register online. Can I sit at home and pull up a website and register to vote?
Yes.
Okay. So, you, you kind of touched on it, I guess it comes down to whether or not somebody wants to perjure themselves, right? Because it, they say, yes, I'm a citizen, or yes, right?
Yeah, well, as, as was mentioned when I was talking to the mayor, if there's a federal office on the election ballot, then the Help America Voter, Help America Vote Act requires that voters, at the time they register, provide proof of identity. So, as I mentioned, that we've got a tenth of 1% of our 1.9 million voters who have not provided that proof of identity, and have been flagged, that we, when we have the primary election in June, if they haven't provided that proof of identity, we're not gonna be counting any ballot they cast. So.
But you would mail to them?
Yes, because, because, under state law, their registration is not fatally flawed, it's still, under state law, you just have to attest under penalty of perjury that you are eligible, that all the information you provided is accurate. It's only when it comes to federal elections that we have to then do the additional step of making sure that they have provided proof of identity.
I mean, why wouldn't they do that at a state level? I mean, you know, policies are set at state levels, if we're gonna do it in a federal election, the process is in place, why would they not do that? Just curious.
It, that decision was made long before I became a registrar, so I'm not sure, you're right, that is a policy decision, it's something that they could change if they wanted to. It's something that this council, or the Board of Supervisors could advocate for Sacramento to do. Whether they would actually entertain that, I, you know, I can't tell you.
I don't think they would. Do we use the national change of address?
Yes.
We do?
Yeah.
Okay. So, let me, let's go through here. Is there any validity to, when someone says, there's more voters counted than are on the rolls? More votes cast? Like, 2 million votes cast, and we have 1.8 million on the rolls? You hear that? Is there validity to that?
Typically, not.
Well, first, let's go yes or no.
I, I can't definitively say yes or no until I see the data they're looking at. So, sometimes I will find that the person saying that has looked at the number of ballot cards that have been scanned, as opposed to the number of ballots, because typically, in a primary or general election, there may be two or three cards for each ballot. And so, there, I've had a situation before where somebody says, you have twice as many ballots as you have voters who cast a ballot, what is that? And I'd figure out that they got that information from the cast vote records, there's a cast vote record for every ballot card, not for every ballot, so they basically double-counted. There is a, it could be, somebody may say, there are more voters in a specific precinct that cast a ballot than you have registered voters on the roll. When, and that is possible, typically, it'll be a precinct that has a college campus on it. And what will happen is that, on the, on the results, the number of voters on the results report is based on how many voters there were 15 days before Election Day, and that number does not change on the results, it's based on that number. Under California law, somebody can do same-day registration and voting a ballot. So, in a, you know, in the November 24 election, at the vote center at UCI, for every one voter that was already on the rolls, two more came and registered at the vote center. So, obviously, when you look at that data, it's gonna look like there's more people voting a ballot than there are, there were voters at 15 days before Election Day. But, only people who actually registered by the time they cast the ballot will actually be counted. So, there's that possibility. The other thing that I will find is sometimes somebody will state a number that doesn't include all the ballots. It may, they may say that you've got more in the count than you actually had people casting a ballot, but the report that they looked at may not use, may not include provisional voters, which, if somebody votes a provisional ballot, that's confidential, it's not something that's gonna be on a report. It wouldn't include somebody who's a confidential voter. It wouldn't include somebody who voted in jail. So, there are certain subsets of voters.
But that number would match their registrations, though, the voter registrations, correct?
Yeah.
Doesn't matter if they voted confidentially.
That last example was given, that somebody mentioned earlier before I spoke, about how some of the numbers from this election weren't balancing in their mind, and I was trying to explain that the reason for that is that there are certain ballots that weren't in the reports that that person was looking at. So, the, in terms of more voters than there are registered voters, those are the two examples that I've come in contact with, which is that somebody looked at the cast vote records, which there's one for every single ballot card, and basically double-counted ballots. Or, it's been a precinct where there's been a lot of conditional voter registrations, like at a college campus, like UCI, or Cal State Fullerton.
What does Florida do that we don't? Well, why, why are they, why are?
In term, in terms of what, sir?
Why are they, why are they able to be so efficient, and so accurate, and so expeditious? What are they doing, this is a genuine question, that we don't?
So, the two main differences that I know about the law for elections in California versus Florida, that contribute to the speed of the results being presented, is that Florida requires all mail ballots to be received on Election Day. California allows them to be postmarked by Election Day and received up till seven days later. They also only provide voters three days to cure a challenge.
No, not to interject, but I've heard that the votes have been counted beyond the postmark of seven days, is that a fact?
No.
Are you, are you able to tell me that a postmarked ballot on the eighth day has never been counted, or ninth or 10th?
Every ballot that we count has to have a postmarked on it, that shows it was postmarked by Election Day, either before, in this last election, either by November 4th or before it. If the post, and so, of all the ballots we received after Election Day during that, what's supposed to be seven days, but because seven days after was a holiday, we actually had until eight days after to receive ballots from the postal service. Of all those ballots we received after Election we received after election day from the postal service, there were only five that did not have a postmark on them. And so then the next step, if there's no postmark, to actually apply to the envelope, there will be a fluorescent barcode that the postal service has added to the envelope as part of their processing. We have a special scanner that we can use to to scan that barcode, which includes the information about when that entered the mail system. So if that barcode shows that the piece of the ballot was in the mail system by November 4th, then we will accept it as being not too late. If there's no postmark, there's no barcode, then state law requires me to go by the date that the voter wrote on the envelope. That's very that happens almost never. But that's the next step. If if we can't if we have no postmark and there's no barcode that we can check, then state law requires us to base the timeliness of the ballot based on the date that the voter said they signed the envelope.
Okay.
But in terms of receiving ballots after E plus seven or in this election, eight days after election, the only ones that we will still process are ones where somebody had an Orange County ballot, and rather than dropping it off in an Orange County dropbox or dropping it off at a Orange County vote center, they put it into an LA County dropbox, or they went they were someplace else in the state and they dropped it in some other county's dropbox. We're required under state law, if if in Orange County, if we receive a mail ballot from another county, we have eight days from when we receive that ballot to forward it to that other county. So there is a possibility that we received ballots after Wednesday last week that had been forwarded from another county. But as long as they had the the timely postmark of November 4th or earlier-
Yeah, I'm not talking about when they arrive at the registrar's office. I'm talking about with their postmark. So I mean, are you confident and comfortable saying if in E plus seven, in this case, E plus eight because of Veterans Day, that no ballot with a postmark of the 12th or later would have or E seven on other election dates has never been counted?
I'm not aware of one of that happening. Every time we every ballot that comes in after election day, there are there are people who are reviewing the postmark to make sure that it's that it's timely. And they're doing that under a camera, so that if somebody's observing, they can watch them actually check the postmark. And so that's happening. Every ballot that comes in after election day, they are checking the postmark before they even take a next step.
Okay. On the third-party address, when you're referencing the the three bureaus experiencing, how many third-party address notices go out? And how many come back? Is it and what what happens to those that don't come back?
I don't have the exact numbers. I could follow up with you in terms of that. I know that the percentage is not high of responses that we get. My guess would be it's about 20%. Those that do don't respond, I can't make any changes to the voter record unless I get information from another official government source or from the voter that they've moved.
So what do you do in that case? And by the way, just 20% is a big number. And all I can use from an election standpoint is usually there's pretty big deltas, not 20% in a winner or loser. But, you know, I can cite, you know, a longtime friend and cohort of Huntington Beach, our Orange County supervisor, who's won many elections, in a million vote cast election. And I went back and looked at the at the OC vote. She won by three votes.
Yeah. We had a school district in the last five years. It was a ton.
So I mean, when you talk about, you know, error, we can't just randomly say it's 20%, 5%. That's a big difference, you know? And in the mission statement, where you your goal is accuracy and confidence-
Mm-hmm.
From a personal level, I'd have to say the mission statement is failing when you have a large majority of people don't have confidence in the system.
And which which is why presentations like this are important, that I am here to answer those questions and provide information and to remind people that that elections are completely transparent. If they want to watch us process ballots, we open up our doors for them to do so.
Well, I mean, you you hear about scenarios that are, you know, signed affidavits where the the volunteers had to be moved to areas where they weren't able to witness everything that they should. And we can get into that. I guess the let me ask you one final question. Let my co-counsel ask their questions. There must be room to improve. It's not a perfect system. And when you have elections, it almost has to be perfect, because if there's room to improve, there's room for error. And if there's room for error, there's room for failure. Is that a fair statement?
As I mentioned in my presentation, we have a culture of process improvement, and that if there is an error, we are trying to get to the root cause of why that error happened, so that we can make sure it doesn't happen again. Obviously, there's humans who are working in my office. And when when something doesn't go the way it's supposed to, we identify that. We make we make sure we improve processes so it doesn't happen again.
I said that was my last question, but I do have a last question for now. You don't have to go back a decade or now, but let let the public know your last three process improvements.
Oh, come on.
I mean, this is this is your baby. I mean, you would take pride in a process improvement.
Yeah, I do. I do.
Yeah. So give me three of them, please.
Well, the for this election, because it was called only 75 days before, we we couldn't do a whole lot of changes. We were we had to make sure that we did the basics, to find as many vote centers as we could.
Let's take this one out of the, you know-
Well, no, but but in that election, the one thing that we did was because I mentioned at UCI in November 24, we had two voters for every one every one voter who was registered, there were two that were registering on the spot, which created long lines, up to four hours at one point. So we evaluated how we could better process voters at UCI and other college campuses to make sure that those lines did not happen again. And so we instituted a pre-check-in process where we found out before people got in line where they registered or not. If they weren't, they went to an area to be able to fill out an affidavit or register on their phones and then wait until that registration showed up on the system so that they could be checked in. And that improved that process significantly. It's something we'll continue to look at and tweak. The other thing that has happened recently is the state authorized that if somebody marks their vote-by-mail ballot at home, and they want to still vote at a vote center in person, as long as they sign the roster when they show up, they can actually scan that that vote-by-mail and vote-by-mail ballot without putting it in the envelope when they deposit it. And so that's something that's available to voters. They can still, if they don't want to wait, if they don't want to stand in the check-in line and they don't want to sign the roster, they can still just drop off their mail ballot. But if they do want to actually be the person scanning that ballot they marked at home, as long as they sign the roster, they they're allowed to do that. So those are two recent examples of of things that we've done. But in it, you know, between '22 and '24, there were probably a couple hundred minor process improvements we did.
Okay, fair enough.
Andrew.
All right. Mr. Page, thank you so much for coming. Really appreciate it. I know this is a hot and contentious topic. So, you know, it obviously shows a lot of integrity that you came and you came so quickly. And so we do appreciate that. You know, I kind of look at this as like a life cycle here, right? So you've got the, you know, the source of origin, the distribution of the ballot, right? Especially with mail-in. And then ultimately, you've got the operations onsite, which you run, and then the cleanup and the afterwards. So I'm just going to kind of try and be really respectful of your time, rapid-fire a couple questions that I think are generic questions that can pull people into where they need to find these answers. Because it's the truth is that there's so much information out there. I'm not going to say mis or dish, but just information. I think a lot of people don't even understand how the system works. And you've been explaining it with a lot of clarity today. I should also say, specific to being onsite and going through and taking the tour, like it from an operations perspective, it's an unbelievable operation. There is, you know, you can tell that there's a lot of integrity and you've put a lot of time into the onsite operation. And I appreciate that. So it because it almost seems as if a lot of the questions that are being asked today and that we've been given also from the outside, there are areas in which you don't necessarily have control over. Like I said, that source of origin of the ballot. So I just want to I want to make that clear because so first, just a couple of basic questions. So during the counting process, I recall during the during the tour, that room that's locked down when you're doing the final tally, that's never connected to the internet correctly?
Correct. That's the tally room is air-gapped. And we also have dual factor authentication for anybody to get in that. We limit it to about a half dozen people who even are allowed access to that room. But every single workstation in the tally room is not connected to the internet. So when ballots are scanned in the the scan room in the warehouse, the all the information from those ballots has to be saved on backed up onto a thumb drive and walked into the tally room to be uploaded.
Okay. So that was my next question was the the thumb drive. So people understand that. And those there are windows there, so everybody can look in and see that. I would also highly encourage anybody who's watching this right now to go, and I don't want to inundate you with too many people. I don't know what the schedule's like when they do that. But I think everybody should actually go down and and watch this and continue to ask questions. One thing I found fascinating was the storage of the ballots. So you actually have to keep, in in the event that there's a lawsuit or a question about anything, how long do you keep the ballots?
It depends on on whether there's federal offices. So if there's federal offices on the ballot, we're required to store securely. I can't even access them. Once we're done with the election, I have to seal the boxes. And I without a corridor, I can't access those ballots. I have to store them for 22 months. And then if there is no election challenge litigation that's been filed that's ongoing, there's no district attorney's investigation of criminal behavior regarding the election, then I'm mandated by the state to destroy all of the ballots at that point after 22 months. We always make sure that we contact the DA's office before we actually take that step, because we don't want to delete any evidence that they may need for anything that they're working on. For this election we're conducting now, when it's just a state election, we only have to store it for six months.
Okay. Six months by the state. Got it. 22 months federally. And then you you also said that it was a tenth of 1% of the ballots that were questionable, right? Can you just-
I meant a tenth of 1% of the voters.
Of the voters that had issues with the-
That have not yet that have been flagged because they have not provided proof of identity.
Okay, okay, perfect. Thank you. And then also, in regards to the somebody mentioned in the comments, and I just wanted to make this clear, because I also don't, you know, I think there's some things that you can control and other things that are outside of your control. The calling of the election, that's that's not the-
That's the media.
That's just the media. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. I mean, there there's a and I get this, because the media historically has called elections pretty quick. Obviously, this one, their polling indicated that they could call it as soon as the polls closed at 8:00 p.m. But a lot of because of changes in the way prior to Prop 50, the creation of an independent commission to create districts without paying attention to political party preference or anything else, looking for communities that should be together, that has created closer contests. The threat and litigation of cities, school districts, and special districts to go from at-large representation like the city council has here to going to by district creates districts with smaller pool of voters to vote, which ends up with with closer elections. So I would agree that there are closer elections, but it's not taking us any longer to process ballots than it did before.
Okay. And then in regards to the oh, the signature piece, that was was fascinating, right? You have three three screens and everybody's kind of pulling up the signatures and looking at it. They don't get any other information. So it's really just signature analysis right there. Do you foresee that in the future that that would end up being automated or like there would be an AI approach to that? Or is it always going to be the the human eye?
We one of our process improvements we've been looking at since I've been there, starting in '22, is whether or not the first review could be used. We could use automated signature verification software for that first review. We have not implemented it at this point, because, as mentioned, for a lot of voters, the only signature we have is their DMV signature, which is very low resolution. So the software does not work real well with low-resolution images. So we've been working to make sure that as we accept ballots, we're making sure all of those accepted signatures are being added to the registration records. We're sending out paper affidavits, people encouraging them to give us a handwritten signature so we can improve the quality of those signatures so that the there'll be value in actually implementing the automated signature verification software for that first review. If if that software challenges the signature and says it doesn't compare to the signature on file, the state law will still require two humans in my office to agree that there are significant differences between the signature on the envelope and in the file.
Got it. Okay. And then I just want to pull together, there's been bits and pieces about the dog voting, and, you know, I'm going to push back into a heavy topic here. You know, I want to make it clear for those who are watching at home. So what you're saying is it's not like Marmaduke is walking in there and pulling the lever, right? You know, Scooby-Doo's not getting crazy in the ballot room.
I think I would notice a paw print on a ballot.
Yeah. What so so what it is, is that it's that somebody is registering on a state level, and they are attesting that they, you know, by obviously, they're perjuring themselves and saying, oh, this is a person, right? Or or to Butch's point about when they register, if it's somebody who's on who's illegal and isn't here, they're saying, yes, I'm doing this. But that the framework of a rule has nothing to do with you, right? That's on a state level. So if somebody if theoretically, people who have a problem with that ever wanted to change that, that wouldn't be in your office. That would be Sacramento.
Yeah. In order to do more on that situation, yeah, I would need a change in state statute.
Okay.
But as I as I mentioned, even with the case with the Costa Mesa woman who created the fictitious registration using her dog's name, as soon as I was given information about that situation by Mr. Gates, I forwarded it to DA the same day to investigate. And they investigated and they they filed charges. So that's what I can do. If I get information from people that, hey, I know my neighbor's getting a ballot, but he's not a citizen or she's not a citizen, I'll forward that to the district attorney to look into.
Okay, yeah.
Personally, under state law, have the authority to verify somebody's citizenship if they attest under penalty of perjury that they are citizens.
Okay, yep. And I just wanted to make that clear, that in that system, that that is something so that people do have grievances with it. They understand they need to they need to address this with their assembly people. They need to address it with senators. It's not, you know, writing you emails isn't going to change anything. The the-
And there and there is a bill in Washington DC that's in the Senate, the SAVE Act, that could potentially require voters to provide proof of of citizenship.
For the initial registration process.
Well, actually, the way that SAVE Act is written, it's it's written for the initial and every time somebody updates the registration. So every time they move, every time they change their political party preference, they would be required to come into my office and provide documentary proof of citizenship. So it would be even more have more requirement than even having a real ID where you just do it once and then you have that real ID. The way the SAVE Act is written right now, it would require people to come in every time they update the registration, which is why when it passed through the House of Representatives and was pushed under the Senate, I pointed out that serving those voters to make sure that eligible voters could actually stay on the voter rolls would cost about $6 million a year for my office to make sure that we could serve all of those voters. You know, we in '24, we had 847,000 registration transactions in the county, you know, an average of 81,000 a month. That's a lot of people to serve. So-
So and so they would under under this hypothetical, they would come into the office and then they would present the ID and then your team. So you'd obviously expand your team. I mean-
Yeah. I'd have to basically double my staff-
Okay.
And get new space to house them.
Does the of the number of registered voters in Orange County, what just and that this is a little bit off topic, but what percentage of them are voting? And I know it changes a little bit by election, but is it like a 50%? I think I saw in the last numbers or-
Yeah. So I I think this election will probably end up somewhere in the 50% range. Presidential general election, it will be 70 to 78%, depending on who's on the ballot.
Yep.
We had there were less voters in '24 than there were in less participation in '24 than there was in 2020. But, you know, typically, your your presidential general election has the highest turnout.
Final question. When you look at, you know, in in the world of of registrar voters, do you is there a North Star for you that you look at another city or within the state or even outside the state, and you say they're doing it? Or are we the North Star? Is there a rating system? Because I know that there has been in Orange County. And I apologize in the presentation, I get didn't get the specific award, if you will. But kind of what do you look towards?
Yeah, I'm very active in the statewide association of county elections officials and county clerks. We're constantly sharing information with each other. So if some other county has a good idea, I'm going to see if we can apply it here. If I think we're doing something good, I'll share that with with those other counties and try to give them some help. So I see it as my role as one of the one of the largest counties in the state to be that resource for smaller counties. But even if a small county has a good idea, I'm going to steal it.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate your time.
Hey, Mr. Bob Page. Thank you again for taking the time to be with us. We really appreciate it. Yeah, to your right. I guess along the lines of, you know, ideas, if I could ask, how long have you been with the OCR O V?
I was appointed by the former CEO on March 11, 2022. Prior to that, I was a registrar of voters for San Bernardino County from July 2018 until I came to Orange County.
And then in terms of, you know, ideas and iron sharpening iron- And then in terms of, you know, ideas and iron sharpening iron and looking at other places, and what are they doing? You're obviously in the business of honing the craft and trying to come up with the most secure systems possible. And so if you're looking to come up with ideas that would make things more secure, I guess why not the idea of voter ID? I don't know how that's partisan, it's just, it's an idea that would make things more secure.
I, if I characterize as partisan, that wasn't my intent. I characterize that as a policy position. So I don't see my role as an administrative elections as being somebody who takes policy positions. If my board of supervisors takes a policy position about elections, then it's my job to advocate for that. But I don't, not the one that, the board supervisors is the only body in Orange County government that has the authority to take policy positions.
And I guess, kind of going back to the infamous dog.
Yeah.
That's voted. How many elections did it vote in here in Orange County before it finally was caught? How many votes were counted under this fictitious dog or name?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, what the district attorney's press release says is that the woman in Costa Mesa voted two ballots in two different elections, the '21 governor recall election and the '22 primary election. The press release says that, because it's been mentioned that state law only requires a voter to attest under penalty of perjury, that they are eligible to vote, the ballot for the '21 recall was actually accepted for counting. The ballot that was cast by the woman, according to the press release, in the '22 primary was rejected, was not accepted for counting, because the registration never provided proof of identity under the Help America Vote Act.
So safe to say that it was proof of ID that finally authenticated, or at least...
Well, I would say that what led to the prosecution was the voter herself admitting to it to Mr. Gates.
Interesting, yeah. But at the end of the day, I guess the only way to really verify, right, was because of voter ID?
Well, under HAVA, it's proof of identity. So what typically is talked about with voter ID is in-person voting, that somebody showing up to vote in a polling place or a vote center has to provide ID of some sort to be able to sign the roster. As opposed to what state law now says, which is the voter just has to state their name and their address, and then sign under penalty of perjury that they are the voter. So that, when people talk about voter ID, that's what they're talking about, is in-person voters being required to show ID before they're given a ballot. For people who vote by mail, which is still a large percentage, in the November '24 election, 22, 22.5% of people voted in person, the rest voted by mail. But depending on the election, like this election, it's probably going to be closer to 90% voted by mail. That, the vote by mail ballots, what we do is we do the signature comparison, which has been talked about here. There's no voter ID associated with vote by mail.
Okay, and then along the lines of, you know, this vote by mail, I guess the only way to really authenticate that a person is who they claim to be is by checking their signatures?
Currently, under state law, yeah. I've heard proposals from, to Sacramento about adding an ID number requirement to the ballot, but right now, state law just requires us to do signature verification.
Yeah, and just kind of coming at this from a common sense, off-the-street perspective, it's, you know, amazing, because we all have conversations, and I'm astonished by the fact that, like, the signature that's on my driver's license looks absolutely nothing like my signature two years later.
Right.
And that signature looks nothing like the signature another couple of years after that. And, I mean, the evolution of signatures, signatures, people's signatures changing, I don't know, you know...
And we have to account for changes over time. And to that point, I'll help you make it, is that the voters who have their signatures rejected at the highest rate are voters who are young or voting in their first election.
I guess what's remarkable to me is just how many times I've voted with different signatures and didn't get, you know, kickback in the past. And, I mean, we're basically just kind of taking people in and training them on the spot, maybe for a couple of few days, and they're going to eyeball it. And I'm just thinking, if somebody was nefarious, and one thing I have learned in the military is, it doesn't take a very small, or it doesn't take a very big group of people to, you know, overthrow or influence governments. If somebody was able to get their hands on, let's say, 100 ballots, maybe it's elderly convalescent people, maybe it's a mix of people that have left the state, they're no longer here, but they manage to get their hands on 100 ballots, and they just decide, I'm going to fill out these ballots, you know, for these people, and I'm going to try and make signatures match as best as I can if I could get my hands on their signatures. Or if not, I'm just going to kind of throw it out there and throw a signature on there. Like, my signature looked nothing like what it does on the driver's license. Yeah, maybe they don't have 100% success rate, and some of those signatures get rejected, but it would seem to be the case that many of those signatures would get through. And I guess you don't really have a way of catching that person, if that's what they're doing. And if you multiply that, you know, you can extrapolate it from, that person gets their hand on 100 ballots to maybe 1,000 ballots, and maybe it's a team of 10 doing... What I'm asking... Hey, what I'm asking! Like I said, in my experience, all right? Traveling the world, being a part of special, it doesn't take many people to influence and overthrow governments, it is not difficult to do. I just presented what I believe would be one way to get votes through the system, if someone knew how to get their hands... So how many ballots, you said 176,000 came off the roll? Because people were either deceased or moved, change of address?
Well, yeah, the 176,000 that we canceled earlier this year were actually on the inactive roll, and they were placed on the inactive voter roll prior to the '22 general election. Typically, somebody is added to the inactive roll because of undeliverable mail that comes back to us, or the mail comes back to us with a forwarding address that's out of the state. If it's a forwarding address that's within the state, their registration moves to that new county. But if there's no forwarding address, or if there's a forwarding address that's out of the state, we make them inactive, we send them a notice that's fordable, that says, you know, if you do not update your registration by the second November, even number election, we are canceling you. And then, once we get to that point, we send them one more fordable notice saying in 15 days, you're going to be canceled. And then we canceled 176,000. Through the beginning of September, we actually canceled about 195,000 voters, which would include then your deceased voters, voters who were incarcerated in state prison for a felony, found by a court to be incompetent in some way and not able to vote. Or they canceled on their own because they moved out of the state. So we're constantly working those records.
Okay, so, just kind of back to that question, too. Suppose there's some highly motivated bad actors that want to fill out... People act like there's not bad people out there in the world, it's wild. And it doesn't take that many of them. How would you, how would you be able to stop somebody or a team like that? How do you stop them?
Well, as you mentioned, we verify signatures. So if somehow they were able to get a hold of signatures and forge those signatures, that would be a place where we wouldn't catch that. It would require us to be told by somebody that somebody was doing that, and...
And they could do that at scale?
There's not been any cases of that happening, but...
You haven't caught them?
Is it possible? I can't say no.
Yeah, I guess it's almost like leaving the front door...
We put as many different, you know, security measures in place as we can to try to catch that. But ultimately, yeah, if somebody wants to break the law, and they're committed enough, they'll find a way.
Yeah, well, I think voter ID would make that one ironclad. But if somebody was at the front, if you left your front door unlocked, right? And you leave, you go, and then you come back, how do you really know for sure if somebody went through that front door unless you have some type of a security system? How are you going to bust somebody like this unless you finally have actually busted them doing this in the process? I'm just saying, it's a way that bad actors could get through at scale. Another example, right? I think we have a couple of slides, if we could pull that up, Shannon. And this was presented by one of the speakers today, and I just redacted an address on there. But you'll see, that's the OC Registrar Voters, you know, that's one of the ballots. And you can clearly tell, maybe we can go to one of the other slides, too, just to make it bigger for all the folks. You can see how their vote, you know, was indicated there. Now, let's suppose there's somebody that's harvesting ballots, because you can harvest ballots, right? You can go to door-to-door and harvest ballots, collect ballots on behalf of other people?
State law authorizes voters to authorize any person they want to return their ballot.
Okay, so let's suppose you have one person, or a team of 10 people, or 100 people going out there, and they're harvesting ballots. It's their legal right, they're legally allowed to do that. But before they go and turn in all of these ballots, they use a flashlight, and they can indicate how so-and-so voted, and just miraculously, you know, that ballot doesn't get turned into the OCRV. I guess the only way to stop that...
I will say that the truth is, is that that experiment, shining a flashlight, we tested our office, and you were able, if you put the flashlight in the right place, you could see how the ballot was marked.
Okay, well, it says, "Special Election, California, November 4, 2025." All three photographs pertaining to the 11/4, 2025 election. So another example, I remember, I was actually there that day, October 7th.
Could I just say one more thing about the example you brought up?
Yes.
So you are correct that a voter can authorize any person that they want to return their ballot. What I advocate and educate voters about is that they should only give their ballot to somebody they trust. And then they should verify that trust by signing up for ballot tracking, so that when their ballot is received by my office, they'll get a text notification or an email saying that their ballot was turned into the registrar voters. And if it's not, then contact me.
Yeah, and, I mean, we can suggest that people don't trust princes that call from Africa to send them, you know, Bitcoin. But unfortunately, people get scammed. There are scammers out there, and they're very successful at doing it. Going back to last year, October 17th, it was at a meet and greet when we were campaigning, and I remember exactly where we're standing on Twilight Drive when there was a gentleman that walked up and, with a ballot in hand, wanted to know if the city attorney was around, and approached him, and I'm standing right there, and this guy says, hey, you know, family member of mine, who is not American citizen, he is living with me, he was given a ballot from the OCRV. Is that possible? And, or is that even permissible, is that allowed? The answer simply was, like, absolutely not. And so we all stood around saying, how can this be? And I guess that would be the question, like, how can this be?
Yeah, so that was referred to me by Mr. Gates as well. And that example was referred to the Secretary of State for looking into. As I mentioned before, without specifically talking to that example and violating that voter's confidentiality, we only register people who have checked the box under penalty of perjury that they are citizens.
Now, in cases where that lady signed up a fictitious dog, I guess a stranger could sign up many fictitious people, right? And what are you going to go do? Go after a fictitious person? I mean, how do you unwind it? How do you follow it back? If a fictitious person did get signed up, and they vote, how do you know that that's a fictitious person? And how do you get back to the person that signed them up if they're hiding behind anonymity? I guess that lady, the only reason you got her, right, is because she came forward and said, I did this. But how many countless others are there out there that we don't know about that could be doing it? At the very least, they've been shown the game plan on how to do it. This is how you do it, just don't go call the press and tell them that you did it.
And the consequences are six years in prison. And, as I mentioned, under federal law, voters are required to give proof of identity when they register. So if somebody creates a fictitious registration and doesn't provide a driver's license, or Cal ID, or Last4 of the Social that matches the information they put on that affidavit, they are going to be flagged as not being able to vote in a federal election.
Yeah, so I'm guessing...
And before, as I mentioned, before every election, if we've, if, say, it's under your scenario, they've created 10 or more fictitious registrations, all at the same address. We are reviewing every single address in our county that has 10 or more voters to confirm whether or not that address can actually have 10 people at it.
What if they're not, you know, that dumb to do that? They would choose maybe like 10 names and 10 addresses?
Yeah, so as I said, then you're looking at, did they provide proof of identity? And if they haven't, then they're not going to be able to successfully vote in a federal election.
But they can vote in the local elections, no problem, they won't get caught, just stay off the feds radar.
Well, right now, under your charter, the municipal elections are held in concert with a federal election. So if somebody, as long as you keep your municipal elections in November of even numbered years, that federal requirement will apply to the ballots that contain your contest on it. It's just like the election we're holding right now, where there is only a state question on the ballot, and there is nothing else, where that HAVA ID does not apply.
Okay, so, I mean, I'm going back to the dog thing, then, how many elections did it vote in before it was caught?
As I mentioned, the district attorney, in their charging documents and in their press release, said that the woman cast two ballots in two elections. In the '21 gubernatorial recall election, which was a state election, no federal offices. And in the '22 primary election, which did have federal offices on it.
Okay. And so just, I guess, just to recap, you know, based off the picture that we see here, if someone were harvesting ballots and persuading people to hand them over to them, and if they had a way that they could distinguish which way that person voted, they would be able to dump them if they voted the way that they didn't want them to? And obviously, there is the threat of, you know, perjury, or that are doing prison time, but there's plenty of people that are willing to risk that, our prisons are pretty full. You know, there's bad actors out there in the world. And so there's no real way to stop, I guess, that scenario. So that's a little concerning, I'm just trying to think, how do we lock that up?
I wouldn't agree with that. As I mentioned, I encourage voters to sign up for ballot tracking. So if somebody, if they give their ballot to somebody, and then it doesn't show up in my office, they'll find out.
Yeah, and then they'll go through the paperwork and say, hey, send me another ballot, I'll do it again.
Ballot, yeah.
I think, I think I've even had that happen, you know, to myself, where my vote didn't wind up getting counted, and so I had to go back. But not everyone does that. In fact, a large, a large amount of people don't do that. So it's kind of a reverse-engineered, you know, way to stop it.
I mean, when we find out about significant things, like was mentioned earlier, about a postal vehicle that was, all the mail on it was stolen on the day that ballots were being delivered. We found out about that, confirmed it with the postal service, and identified all the addresses that had mail on that truck. We canceled all of those ballots, so they could not be voted, and we mailed replacement ballots to all those voters.
And maybe the last couple of elections, like, how many people have reached out to the OCRV telling them, my ballot seems like it didn't make it?
I don't have that number handy, I could get that to you if that's something you want, in terms of how many replacement ballots we issue every election.
Could you ballpark it, nothing exact?
No.
Tens, or hundreds, or thousands?
I don't want to guess a number. I'd ra, typically, I don't memorize all this data, I know where to find it. So if I get asked a question, I look it up and provide real data. So I would prefer not to ballpark something I haven't looked at recently.
I guess how would we stop, like, 10 people that are highly motivated to gather a bunch of ballots and sign on behalf of others, and just, you know, accept that maybe a large percentage of them don't make it through? How do we stop that? You have to actually catch them doing it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Hmm.
Which is how people running a red light get caught. Somebody has to see them doing it.
All right.
But the point is, they are doing it.
Well, I don't, if I had proof that somebody was doing it, I would refer it to the district attorney. So we're talking about hypotheticals here.
Right, no, it's understood, but I think, not to interrupt Councilman Williams, but, you know, let's agree that it does happen. At what scale, we don't know, but it does happen. That's a fair statement.
I'm not going to agree to that. Whatever I suspect, I forward to the district attorney. And if they find enough evidence, they prosecute, such as they did the woman from Costa Mesa.
Chad, may I ask one quick question? Chad?
How would you catch somebody, right, that's doing that? How would you catch them? At best, you might get a signature that didn't match, but you didn't catch that person. How are you catching that person that did that? Especially if they're smart, and they know to cover up their tracks, they're not... How do you catch them?
If somebody tries to, in the examples I gave, if somebody tries to cast two ballots, we refer them to the district attorney for investigation. If we get information from somebody that somebody voted illegally, committed fraud, isn't eligible, we refer that for investigation to the district attorney, so...
So you can only do it if you got information? So I'm just saying, if there's a person...
Or if we found information. If there's a situation, say there's a household where there are, say, four voters, two parents and two kids, and we reject three of the ballots in that household because the signatures did not compare. And then we go back, and we look at all four ballots. And we believe that the one ballot that was accepted was signed the other three ballots, that person's getting referred to the district attorney for investigation.
Okay, I'm going to put my, I'm going to put my place in the feet of a bad actor, right? That's probably not the way they would do that, all right? I'm guessing the way that they would do it is they'd get their hands on ballots from all over the place, not in just one particular place, to bring a lot of heat on that one address. They would do it from all over the place. And then they'd gather them up, and they would just fill them out, get the signatures on them... just fill them out, get the signatures on them, vote a certain way, and if you guys reject even half of those signatures, you reject half of those signatures and you send mail back or whatever, but they got through. They got through with the other half. And the only way to bust that person for doing that is if somebody rats them out or they get caught in the process of doing it, but if they're good at what they do, they're not gonna have somebody writing them out, and they're not gonna get caught in the process of doing it. At worst, I guess their only risk is that they might not get as many votes through if they didn't do a good job of putting a signature down. And my whole point, too, is that it's kind of just funny on the street. People will say, yeah, my signature doesn't match anything like my driver's license. My signature looks completely different and my ballot gets accepted all the time.
Well, I mean, in your case, have you only registered once? You've never, you've never moved, you've never changed your political party, you've never reregistered for any reason?
Never moved, I mean, I've moved all over the place, but.
Had to reregister when you moved.
Always been in California, home address.
Yeah, what I'm saying is every time you moved, you had to reregister, so a new signature was, was acquired.
I guess, how, no, it's going from the signature that you have on your driver's license, at some point, there's a different signature. Maybe it's when I moved. Now I got a new signature when I move. So which one are you gonna count? Which one's the real Chad?
The, the first review, we're looking at the most recent signature in the file. If that signature is found to not compare by the first person reviewing them, we look at all signatures in the file.
And so there could be 10 different kinds of signatures by the same person. Which one's the real person?
If on.
I'm not alone on this. I know many people have signatures that look very different than they did when they were younger, or when they were middle aged, or when they're elder. It changes, so like, which one's the real one?
The law requires us to look for similarities in the signatures and to look at all the signatures, not to make a determination of which signature is the real one.
Okay, and then I just think the common person off the street would tell you, my signature doesn't look anything similar to what it did when I was younger.
And if, and if we identify those, we mail them a letter a couple months after the election and encourage them to sign a new affidavit to give us a handwritten signature as it exists today. So we can use that for comparison the next time.
Okay, I, I got, I won't take any more time, thank you.
I also would like to thank you for coming. Actually, I'm surprised, because we're a very passionate city and having that we're the only city in the state of California where we put voter ID on the ballot and it passed, pretty important to us. So, number one, I'm one of those people whose signature does not match, my, the way I sign my ballot doesn't match my ID, and I do have to thank your tracking system for giving me peace of mind for that, because when I got on council, I used to sign different, you know, when I'm at home. I wasn't in a rush, and I got on council, and when I was the mayor, I was signing all these certificates, so I kind of changed my signature so it wouldn't hurt my hand and get carpal tunnel. So, so I accidentally signed my ballot the way I signed the certificates, looks nothing like it, and it was counted both the last two elections, wasn't done on purpose, but I did use the tracking system where it told me we received your ballot, and then later on, it said we counted your ballot. So the system does work great. The signature matching has always concerned me, because I am one of those people. Also, I actually did observe the signature verifications in 2018, I went to observe in 2020, and I also stopped by in 2022. A lot has changed. When I was there in 2018, we were standing behind a person, there was, there was no partitions, we were breathing on this person, and there were like, I don't know, 40 of us in there, all crammed up. It made me uncomfortable, because I don't like to look over people, so it has improved significantly since I went out there in 18 and 20. So, thank you for taking those steps. I do like your mission statement where it says that you guys take quality management issues seriously, which means there's room for change. And I'm not asking you any gotcha question, actually, I met you maybe last month at the Pacific Club, you were on that panel, and I think you were.
Former, at the OC forum, yeah.
Yes, and you thought I was gonna ask you about the dog, because you, the minute you saw my question, you're like, no dog has ever voted.
I assume somebody would.
Yes, but I didn't. I was trying to respect the area. So, so some of the issues that we have, and one of the reasons that we don't trust the election system, I'm being one of them, being the daughter of immigrants who left their countries, not because they wanted to leave their mom and dad behind, moms and sisters, cultures and values behind, because they had to, because their vote didn't matter. One of those countries is Mexico. Right there, you don't only need an ID to vote, you need a voting credential to vote, and look at the state that that place is in. You can never take enough measures to make sure that our elections are safe. And given that, every single thing that we do within our day-to-day lives is based on politicians, legislation, we need to make sure that the people we put in those seats are going to do what's in the best interest of the people, which is why it's so important, especially when you hear stories from your parents of how the government never listened to the people. So, that being said, voter ID is super important to us, and in your opinion, if we ask, I see, I see the smile, if we were to implement voter ID, would it have any detrimental effect in our elections that you can possibly think of?
The, if you were able to implement that, and you don't change your election day, so it happens on the same day as a statewide general election, the one concern I would have would be voter confusion. Voters having to go to different locations to get a city ballot than they would to get a ballot with all the other contests on it, different rules at different locations, the potential that some, with the city mailing out a ballot, with the city offices in an envelope, and we're mailing out a ballot with all the other contests in an envelope, I foresee the potential that somebody could mail the city ballot in their county envelope by accident. So I see the potential for voter confusion if the election stays on the same day and there are separate elections.
Do other cities in Orange County have different processes in place for their elections at all? Are we all the same?
All the cities in Orange County consolidate their elections with the general election in November, even numbered years. There are cities in LA County, charter cities, that do conduct their own elections, but in Orange County, all 34 cities consolidate with the general election.
Yeah, that's what I was asking. So, yeah, so just to clarify, thank you for that answer, and I understand, because we've been sitting down trying to figure out what the best transition would be if we were to be able to implement the voter ID, how we would do it, because many other cities want to do what we do. We do not think that asking for voter ID will disenfranchise voters. We do not believe voter ID will target minorities, I'm one, and, you know, with a lot of communities. One of the excuses was that voter ID would disenfranchise low-income communities of color, you know? We, we lacked resources, not brain cells, so we always figured out how to get an ID. And so, my question is, if we were to implement voter ID at a statewide level, do you believe that that would make our elections more secure, or do you not think it, do you think it wouldn't make a difference?
If that became state law, I would implement it.
Yeah, but, but as a normal person.
Yeah, I, you're, I'm not gonna make, I'm not gonna get into a policy debate about what's better, what's not. I am an election administrator, you guys are policymakers, if this is the direction you want to go, then you're pursuing it, obviously, but I'm not gonna say it's the right way or it's the wrong way, okay? If, if it becomes state law, I will implement it.
Okay, so one of the concerns.
Or if it became federal law. If, if Congress decided that they wanted to weigh in on how states conduct elections and require voter ID for in-person voting, then I'd be required to implement it.
So, well, some of us, we, we just don't trust a whole lot, because we've seen the ballots that people are getting when they're not citizens. I was there when that gentleman handed out the ballot. We know the dog got away with it, and she pretty much turned herself in. We have a problem with people when they go, when they go to get an ID, that you pretty much use the honor system that you're a citizen. We shouldn't use honor, and it's not, I know it's not a Mr. Page issue, but our concern is, we shouldn't rely on the honor system to go out and vote. We, we, we need to verify, and that's what our concerns. There was a woman who came up to me, you know, people, when we're out there, and she came up to me, and she says she signed her husband's ballot and submitted it because he couldn't make it back to sign the ballot, and they counted it. We saw that, and, you know, the non-citizens, so there are, it's not perfect, so there are concerns there.
And, and when you were given that information, did you let us know so we could have that investigated?
No, she came up to me during the Tuesday fair and said, hey, thank you for everything you guys are doing, I supported you guys, but I'm telling you, I'm worried about our elections, I saw my husband. She said hi, bye, and walked away. I don't know who she is. But I have no reason to not think she was telling me the truth, because there really was no reason to share that.
But once I know something, I can't.
And, and I understand.
Keep it to myself, I've gotta do something with it.
I don't know who she was, she just came up to me downtown and said something on the street fair. I'm not gonna follow her home. So, anyway, we're concerned, we're not trying to be difficult here in Huntington Beach, we are concerned, and we do have valid issues that have come brought to us, and that's why we're asking these questions. Number one, I also want to thank you for being so respectful, professional, and not being condescending to our concerns. You've answered every question in a very respectful manner, and that means a lot to us. When we have people, thank you. So, when you have people that we say, there are concerns, and they say, oh, no, the system's perfect, nothing is perfect. Nobody will ever convince me that anything is perfect. So we're just trying to make sure that we protect our residents, our elections, if we can't do it at a state level, federal level, we're trying to start to make the change here at a local level. I'm hoping that moving forward, we can have a better working relationship and see if there's a way and how we can do this, because at the end of the day, there's nothing like peace of mind when it comes to voting. If I have to show an ID to go buy cough syrup, I have to show an ID to get a massage, it just seems ridiculous that we don't show an ID to go vote. So I'm hoping that later on, we can continue this dialogue, have these communications, find a way to implement this, and give the voters a security that they need. The people who are sitting here right now, what time is it? It's nine o'clock. Most of them are here to come listen to this because they're concerned, and when there's a concern, we need to find a way to find a resolution. So thank you for being here, we will definitely be reaching out to you some more, and I do appreciate you taking our concerns seriously and actually taking the time to come knowing the temperature of what this, and the controversy this issue brings.
Thank you for inviting me.
All right, one more. Casey?
Mr. Page, I'll keep you brief. Thank you for coming, obviously. You know, the comment that the individual made earlier and who keeps giving outbursts from the audience that we are tearing America apart by simply asking questions and concerns about our election process is flat-out outrageous, and talk about like silencing dialogue and open debate, so we're just here because residents have expressed concern, and there's nothing wrong with asking you questions, which I appreciate you doing today. And so when you think about it, the residents in this day and age with mail-in ballots, use of ballot drop boxes, ballots being counted weeks after election day, they have lost faith in free and fair elections, and it's critical that we fix it, even if one person has a concern, because that increases voter turnout. In Georgia, when they implemented voter ID, turnout increased significantly like the next year. And so unfortunately, in today's election model, it's administered by you guys, the county, and then essentially controlled by the state, so it really removes citizens' ability to have real local community involvement. People touched on that earlier, it brings, you know, precincts together, but right now, it's a one-size-fits-all model, and in Huntington Beach, when we pass voter ID, our monitoring of drop boxes and increasing polling places, what we told, told the voters, that they're very, very well could be a system that is still administered by you guys, the county, and one that is administered by our own city, or possibly like a hybrid version. So I hope, you know, we win our appeal with the state on voter ID, but that would be the genesis, is why does there have to be a one-size-fits-all model? Why can't there be, you know, more cooperation with you guys and perhaps like a hybrid version? I mean, do you think that's possible?
The decision of, depending on what results from your litigation.
Right.
If you're given the authority to require voter ID, as I, what I've read in terms of the news coverage of what's been argued recently, is the city has argued that it has the right to do this because it doesn't have to consolidate its election with a statewide election.
Right.
So if, if you decide you don't want to consolidate, in order to do voter ID, you decide not to consolidate your election, then you need to ask the board supervisors if the registrar of voters can conduct the election for you.
Right. But I mean, I, I foresee a scenario where you talked about voter confusion, you could walk in and, are you here to vote for statewide initiatives? Are you here to vote for Huntington Beach only?
Yeah.
Right? And then that's a separate ballot, and that's at the, you know, and I would imagine the volunteer could, you know, implement that. Well, if you are voting for city-only issues, can I please see your ID? Right? And I was like, well.
We'd have to train every, every, person working at every single vote center in the county, because Huntington Beach voter could go to any location in the county.
I would imagine that's not very hard to, to train an individual to do that, do so, but, I mean, it's just a simple question, right? I understand it's more.
And I'm not saying, no, I'm just explaining that, that a vote, if, if this is implemented and your election is somehow on, you know, conducted at the same time or in concert in some way with the statewide election, then I'm going to have to train, because if, if the board supervisors tell me to, tells me to conduct your election, then I'm gonna have to train all my, you know, 1,400 vote center workers, the different processes. If this person's in a precinct in Huntington Beach, this is the process. If they're in a precinct outside of Huntington Beach, this is the process. That's just something I'll have to do.
Okay, that's fair. I mean, because when, and Councilmember Williams touched on it, really, when you distill it down, this all hinges on signature verification, but if you had voter ID, it would eliminate the need for signature verification.
Just, just to clarify, signature verification's only done on mail ballots.
Sure.
It's in the, in-person voting, the voter is signing the roster under penalty of perjury that they are the voter.
Right.
But there's no signature comparison of the, the signature on the roster.
Okay. So, again, I've just, I use this analogy up here before, it's, it's so abnormal when you walk in and say, they ask who you are, you say your name, your address, and they flip over the screen, does this look right? You're like, well, yeah, and you just like sign it. Whereas, you know, if you're going through the airport and TSA is like, can I see your, see your ID? I'm like, can I just tell you my name and my address? I mean, it's, you can't function in today's society without identification, so I just feel, I mean, you really can't, you're just gonna not function in today's society without identification, so I'm hopeful, you know, I personally voted for the statewide initiative, or signed the petition for the statewide initiative to get voter ID on the ballot in November 26th. I'm obviously hopeful as an individual that it passes, because I think with working with you guys, if, if that other layer of protection is implemented, it's really to give people more faith in our elections to increase voter turnout. I know the counterargument that we, we all mail, you know, everyone gets a mail-in ballot, but again, that's not really the point, it's like you want to give people more confidence in our elections, and if voter ID just delivers that little bit extra percentage that people want to go vote in person, and they, they, they really enjoy election day, I mean, I don't see the issue with that, and I know you can't obviously talk about it. Cleaning the, cleaning the voter rolls, so like, what is the current process to clean the voter rolls?
As I said, it's, it's a daily process based on information directly from the voter or from an official government source, which includes, official government sources include United States Postal Service National Change of Address Database, it includes information from the Department of Corrections that somebody has been placed in state prison for a felony, it includes information coming from a superior court that a voter has been found incapable of voting, it includes information from either county or state or federal that somebody has died.
So, so this is like a daily cleaning process?
It's a daily thing, as I mentioned, as I mentioned, in 2024, there were an average of 81,000 registration transactions a month.
So, I mean, I've read a stat, there's currently over 800 voters in Orange County that are still on the voter registration list but have been confirmed to move out of state. Is that accurate, if you know?
I, I, usually when somebody tells me that they've received some information from the National Change of Address, and we select, say, 10 of the voters that they've identified as not being where the voter roll they have from six months ago, we typically find every time that we've already made the update.
Okay.
So if somebody gave me a list of 800 voters that they said they believe don't live what they are, we would randomly select 10 to see whether or not the information that they had was correct or not.
Okay, so I, I believe you previously attempted to gain access to the jury duty list of people who declined to serve due to citizenship status to compare that to our county rolls, is that true?
The supervisor Wagner presented, he asked me to present, but it was his proposal to support legislation that would require superior courts to provide information regarding jury questionnaires where the potential juror indicated they could not serve because they were ineligible, either because they weren't citizens, they didn't speak English, or they didn't live in the county, so that, his proposal was that that information would then. So that, his proposal was that that information would then be shared with county registrars. It would, the proposal wasn't that I would automatically cancel somebody who said on a voter registration record they were a citizen and then on a jury questionnaire said they weren't. It would have been to reach out to the voter and say, we've got conflicting information about your citizenship. Please respond as to which one's true.
Seems reasonable.
If the person said that they, you know, the way that would have worked if somebody had said they couldn't serve on a jury because they didn't, they weren't fluent in English, then the proposal was I would send that voter a letter saying, hey, did you know that we provide election materials in nine different languages other than English? Would you like to give us a language preference for your materials?
And so how did that proposal, was it voted on?
It, the board, there were only two votes in favor of it, so it did not move forward.
Do you know who voted in favor?
I believe it was Wagner and at the time, Doe.
Okay, thank you. So with the, the, sorry, most of my questions have been answered. Let's see. Want to focus on the chain of custody?
Yes.
So Chad touched on it with, you know, bad actors. Is there in the barcode on the ballot, when I go to vote in person and I scan that ballot, does it say that I am the one that voted?
No, there's nothing on the ballot that has personal information about the voter. The barcodes on the ballot indicate the precinct it's for and some other information we use for mailing the ballots out.
So what prevents someone from scanning 1,000 ballots of the same vote?
So when somebody comes in to do that, we have a different secrecy folder we give to somebody. If, if somebody comes up and wants a ballot printed that they can hand mark, we give them one privacy folder for them to put the ballot in before they go into the voting booth. If they say they want to sign the roster to be able to scan a ballot they already marked at home, we give them a different colored secrecy sleeve and ask them to edge the ballot out without looking at how they voted because we can't know how they voted. But we ask them to, to push the ballot to the edge so we can confirm that there's only one A card and one B card.
Okay, but so, so there really is now, again, we're just.
But if somebody showed up and said, I want to scan my ballot and I want to scan my wife's ballot, if the wife's not there, that wife's ballot's not being scanned.
So again, there's really no mechanism in place to only scan one ballot once. There's no barcode that, that limits that ballot to the individual voting. So theoretically, you could scan 1,000 ballots if there were a bad actor and they would all be counted.
But as, as I said, when somebody's showing up at a vote center to ask to scan their, their mail ballot, we're asking them to show us how many ballot cards they have. If they had 1,000 ballot cards, they're not going to be allowed to go to the scanner.
Right, but I guess why can't a ballot be connected with the individual voting? I mean, is that that hard on, on a barcode or some, some demarcation?
California Constitution says that all voting is secret.
Okay. Chain of custody and ballot drop boxes? So they're open 24/7, 29 days with no video surveillance?
Some have video surveillance.
So why don't all ballot drop boxes have video surveillance? Because you guys livestream at the ROV, correct?
We livestream ballot processing when we're doing it. I do not livestream people voting because it would.
Not voting, but I'm saying to you, the process, you livestream. So why can't we have 24/7 video surveillance of ballot drop boxes?
We could.
Okay.
But if I'm not gonna have somebody sitting there watching to see who's putting ballots in the box, because as was mentioned before, state law allows a voter to, to authorize any person they want to return their ballot. So if somebody walks up to a drop box and puts five ballots in the, the drop box, that's not illegal.
Sure, but so.
So the only reason I access the video footage is if somebody tries to tamper with the box, break into it, then I need evidence as to what happened and who tried to do that.
Well, so you kind of led me to my next question. So that was part of our charter amendment was to monitor ballot drop boxes. So you have ballot harvesting, which is legal, and you have ballot trafficking, which is not. Can you kind of explain the difference between ballot harvesting?
And what was the last one?
Ballot trafficking.
What is ballot trafficking?
So essentially ballot harvesting, right? You have to, if, if I want to go harvest your ballot, after, you have to sign the envelope that I am harvesting your ballot, correct?
Yeah, the voter is required to sign their own envelope. And then the person who's been authorized by the voter to return their ballot is also supposed to sign the, the envelope.
So and then I could then take that and then put it in the ballot drop box?
Correct. You have, the, the person who's authorized is supposed to cast the ballot within three days or by 8:00 PM on Election Night, whichever is earlier.
But what's to prevent someone from gathering 50, 100 ballots that haven't been harvested and then just stuffing them in, in the ballot drop box, which would be trafficking, ballot trafficking?
Each one of those is in an envelope?
Yes.
With a signature?
Yeah.
As it was mentioned before, then I'm verifying the signatures on those envelopes before they're being opened.
But they would have had to have been harvested and they were not. Right, you can't, you can't, I'm saying you can't just go take 100 people's ballots without having harvested it the legal process way of, of that voter signing the back of the envelope, allowing you to go harvest it. So in this situation, someone could have 100 ballots that doesn't have the back of the envelope signed from being harvested and they're stuffing them, stuffing the ballot.
Yeah, so the, the, if a ballot shows up without a signature of an authorized person, I'm still required to process it.
But I understand, so I.
Has to have the voter signature.
The 24/7 monitoring would allow people, if they had concerns, they saw someone, someone coming at 3:00 in the morning and stuffing 100 ballots in there, they go, hey, I don't believe those were harvested correctly. Can you go check out that ballot drop box, pull all those ballots out? I mean, would, would that nullify it if it wasn't harvested correctly?
Would not nullify those ballots because we verify the voter's signature. And as I mentioned, the state law says that if the person authorized to return the ballot fails to sign it, I'm still required to process the ballot.
Okay, so then it does, so then there is no, it's not necessary to sign the back of an envelope that it was harvested, is what you're saying?
Not under the law, no.
Okay.
I mean, the law says the person is required to sign it, but then it tells me that if it's not, I still have to process it.
Okay. That was it. I mean, the chain of custody is obviously huge, so you just touched on that that's a huge hole in the system. I guess my question, you brought it up earlier about the SAVE Act before Congress. Why did you opine on that legislation before it was passed?
I made a statement about the potential cost.
Why?
Our estimate.
Were you, were you? Were you asked to do so?
No.
Okay. But wouldn't that, couldn't that be seen as like you putting your thumb on the scale potentially before the Senate passed that legislation when you were not asked?
That, it was perceived that way by some, but every bill that goes through Sacramento, if it's got a cost, we're estimating the cost and providing it to the legislature.
But you were not requested this?
No, but, but it was an important enough bill that it had a significant enough cost. I thought it was important for people to know how much it would cost Orange County to implement it.
But when people see that, it, there was that perception that you're putting your thumb on the scale because you were not asked to, to put a cost that.
Some people perceive it that way. That was not my intent, but that was how it was perceived.
If you're trying to be impartial, again, we're trying to, you know, give people faith in our free and fair elections. Like that, to me, you know, was an error because it, it showed partiality to a lot of people. And it just, again, that's why you're here. We appreciate you're here. And there's nothing wrong with asking these questions, but, you know, I just.
Yeah, I just, I just would stress that I see it as part of my responsibility as administrator if there's legislation proposed to put a cost to it.
Okay.
So that the people who will approve it know what the cost would be.
Awesome. Well, thank you for coming. I'm more impressed that you were able to stand this whole time without having to sit down. So appreciate that. Thank you.
Real quick.
I think Bush has got to follow.
Oh, yeah, well, real quick. How many cases do you refer to the DAs and how many get filed? Oh, number.
I actually brought that. Hold on.
And while you're looking, are you guys subjected to the constraints of SB 54 where you're not supposed to comply or assist ICE? Like if you come across information that a person who is here illegally and they voted in a federal election, are you barred from assisting ICE in giving them that information?
Never asked County Council that question before. And if, if I was given information that somebody was not a citizen and was registered, as I said, I'd give that to the DA to investigate. So I would report it whether or not.
But if ICE came to you, if ICE came to you and asked.
Then I'd have to deal with that and figure out whether I was, what my responsibility was.
Well, then you're probably not constrained by SB 54.
Yeah, so in terms of referrals to the DA, specifically where we suspected that a voter tried to vote twice and we caught that. In the '24 general election, we referred 345 voters. In the '24 primary, we referred 437 voters.
You don't know how many were filed on?
To date, none.
No, none? Oh, they.
The Costa Mesa woman is the first voter fraud prosecution, well, second. There was one also in, in the fall of 90, of 2004 in which the district attorney filed charges against a Canadian citizen who registered to vote in 2016 and cast a ballot in 2016.
Wow.
Those are the only two since I've been in Orange County. The, all the other cases the district attorney has filed have been related to either illegal activities related to circulating petitions or candidates misrepresenting information on their candidacy declaration.
All right.
Those, but other, in terms of voter fraud, those are the only two since '22.
Hate to do this to you, but Dawn's got one and Butch's got one.
Okay.
Well, you just answered one and that was how many have you referred? Meaning your system caught it, right? I was gonna ask you how many you've referred to the DA. It's really disheartening to hear that you've referred close to 800 and there's no files have been filed, no charge has been filed.
Yeah, the DA's investigated them, but they've got a, my, you'd have to talk to the DA, but I believe they would only file charges that they could prove intent.
Well, okay. The intent was there, that's why you caught, right?
Yeah. Again, you'd have to talk to the DA. I know they investigate.
I just wanted to make sure that you are referring.
Everything we refer.
If you would have told me two or something, I'd be like, well, then either there's no voter fraud or you're not catching anybody. But I guess if you catch a couple hundred against the, you know, a couple hundred thousand, maybe you're catching them all. I doubt it. So the, the one thing, two things that are a little disheartening and then I'll let Butch ask this question. One, we've got two out of the seven people up here that have given you classics incidents where their signatures don't match and their votes have been counted time and time again. So I think there's a lot of room to improve that. Maybe that can be a process. I think there, I think that's a flaw right there. And then hearing what you just told Casey that one law says you have to sign the back of the envelope, but you don't have to enforce it, you're still getting counted. To me, that's a big breach, positioning right there. Somebody could, you know, back to the bad actor, you could go around and just forget about harvesting the ballot from the people. You've been grabbing ballots and some of the, listen, this is an indictment on the elderly. I am elderly. But they, they might not know they didn't get their ballot, they don't care, they don't vote. They get a ballot, they don't turn it in. You know, we have a lot of voter apathy. So you, you're just getting ballots and then you sign it, any signature. You're only catching some because you're not catching them and the back of the envelope's not signed, but you're still processing the ballots. So to me, that's, that's a big flaw. And then the other thing that I was really disappointed to hear, if we said we gave you a file of 800 people that we thought were out of county, dead, or whatever, you're gonna take 10 ballots? And if they're correct, this is not the Gallup poll. You don't take a sample size. Why don't you say, you've got technology, why wouldn't you run them all?
If, if that 10 random sample indicated that there were updates to do, then we would look at them all.
But what if, what if 10 out of 800 were good? What if, what if, what if 500 out of 800 were good? What about the 300 that aren't good?
As, as I said, when we've done 10 random ever, we've already made the changes. On the 10 random that we've selected, we've already made those updates. And so every indication, every time somebody has indicated to us that they have information about a voter having, information having changed, we find that we've already made the change. There is nothing in California law that gives a citizen the right to challenge the eligibility of a voter.
Right, but I, I would ask you as my registrar of voters to, to do a hundred. How do you, what do you, do you manually look at it?
Yeah.
Okay.
We randomly select 10 and then we review the voter file to see what the current information for that voter is.
So I guess I would say, not to interrupt you, I appreciate your answer. I guess if your, your Janet win and you win a vote where there were over a million votes were cast and you win it by three votes, you know, knowing that you're only taking sample sizes, it didn't affect her then. Maybe she could have won by more, maybe she could have lost. I don't know. The bottom line is I just don't see why you don't take these files to the 100 percentile, even if it's a manpower issue. Let me VPC, a person power issue.
As, as I said, we, we test with the random sample. If the random sample shows we've already updated all those addresses for those records, we don't see the reason to, to continue looking at the other ones. It's the same thing with petitions. There's an, an option for us to do a random sample of the signatures on a petition and then calculate a projection as to how many, what percentage would be valid to determine whether or not.
That's how the Gallup poll does it. And that, what, that's what happened on a recall for, for the previous council members. You took a sample size of, you know, a 10% or something out of a 15,000 signature gathering. And from there, you gleaned that the failure rate was at, at a level where the whole thing was disqualified. And we spent, people spent a long time gathering signatures. And I think it, it was worthy that they should have been all counted, no matter whose side is looking for the answers. You know, I think we as voters, you know, if you want to instill confidence, I think this could be a process change. You, you need to validate all ballots, not just, you know, a miniscule amount and then say, well, like the Gallup poll, you know, I'm not gonna survey the entire United States and I can make an educated guess.
Yeah, again, we're not talking about ballots, sir. We're talking about addresses on registration records and signatures on petitions. And if, if we receive, say, a recall petition from the city clerk, the city clerk directs me whether or not to do a random sample or to look at all of them. That's her decision, not mine. It's only my decision if it's for a school district or a special district.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Mine is way shorter than that. Way shorter.
Yes, sir.
Is there any chance that those 500 ballots that got stolen in Huntington Beach were taken out of their envelopes? So now they have no barcodes and they were given to somebody? And those somebodies, 500 of them, 50 of them, five of them, doesn't matter, were they brought maybe to a, a voting center or where they could be scanned, maybe the ROV? Because isn't the ROV the only place they can get scanned?
The, any vote center, every vote center has two ballot scanners and we have scanners at our office.
Okay, so my only question is, I don't want to hear about all about that. Any chance those 500 ballots could have been used illicitly?
Is there a possibility?
The knitting group up there just answered my question. So don't you worry because I believe everything they say.
You can answer it the other way.
Oh.
Go ahead, Mr. Page.
Quiet knitting group.
But what I would say is that because the, because the ballot has no information about the voter, it's only the, if the voter tried to turn a ballot that we, it would have been showed up as canceled. So it's based on the return envelope, the code, the barcode on the return envelope. Under your hypothetical.
It took the ballots out of the envelope.
Somebody took the ballots out and then somehow figured out how to get them cast. They'd have to either send people to the vote centers to either lie about who they were or they'd have to access ballot return envelopes and forge signatures. There'd have to be, there'd be a number of steps they have to take to make that happen.
All right, well, thank you very, very much. You've been wonderful. I got really great answers. You guys have been awesome up there because we could hear you down here all night long. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.